Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, July 23, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order, and we have one of our commissioners this evening, Lisa Lundquist, is attending by computer. Next will be our first action item tonight. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the Commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the Commission present at such Commission meetings. We would like to welcome tonight, once Aubrey has sworn him in, we have a new Commissioner, as those of you in the audience have probably seen, Tom Inkley. So welcoming him on board, Aubrey.
If you'll just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Thomas Hinkley, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner for the City of Friendswood, Galveston, and Harris Counties, and the State of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States, and of this state, so help me God. Thank you.
Okay, we will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the Commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the Commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the Commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later regular Commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and the Commission's Vice Chair, Richard Sassen, will be the timekeeper. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? If you could, please, as you come to the podium, state your name.
Just before we get started, just a warning. At four minutes, I'll put up a yellow sign, and then at five minutes, we'll tell you the time is up, should you take that long.
Thank you. I won't. My name is David Lorenz. I'm the pastor at First Baptist Friendswood. I'm here on behalf of our church, which has a pending action item that's been discussed for a number of months now, both here and at our city council. And really, I'm here kind of as a result of the city council and their desire to send our SUP, specifically our tower and our cross, kind of back to you to clarify the planning and zoning ordinance for height restriction. And so I want you to know that we've been working with our architect, who is also here, Stephanie Kopp, with Ziegler Cooper Architects, and we want to, of course, help and be a part of the solution. I shared that with city council a number of months ago, that we want to be a part of the solution and help. And so what we've done is we've gone back and redesigned a little bit our tower and our structure to a maximum height of 70 feet for the main structure, because we know 70 feet is the limit right now in the downtown district, and reduced the total height of the entire tower and cross to 88 feet. So the main structure is the tower, that's the actual building part, if you want to put it that way, to 70 feet, and then an ornamental cross, simple but elegant, right, at 18 feet. And I know one of the issues that you're facing as planning and zoning is clarifying that ordinance. And we want you to know that it's not undue pressure on us or a burden on us if you were to allow us to go back to city council or take the process of asking for an exemption now that we've made that change, so that it doesn't pressure you into working the ordinance quickly or any of that. But if you believe that's in the best interest of both the church and the city, we would be open to that. And I'd invite anyone else who's here, because I think everyone here, except our city council members, are here on behalf of First Baptist Friendswood in this motion. But I wanted you to hear that from me. You've seen the drawings, you've seen the structure. It's a beautiful structure. It's going to add plenty to the community. I was looking today again at their Friendswood website, because I was trying to figure out how to get on the emails of the city, and I was reminded of what our city was founded on. There were three things that are mentioned: a respect for God, family, and education. And we have a keen interest in all three of those and want to help the city pursue those things, and at the same time, are excited to support both those kinds of things and kind of our motto of "Live Here, Work Here" as well, which plays right into that simple living that Friendswood established on. And so we want to be a part of the solution. We've made those changes in our drawings and our renderings, and so if that assists you and helps us, we'd be glad to go through that process again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time during our public period? Okay, seeing no one else. Next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a Commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held June 25, 2020, and the special meeting July 6, 2020?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? I don't know if Lisa could hear us or not.
You are on mute. Oh, there we go. Oh, no. Sorry. The two seconds of minutes.
Do you?
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda. Okay, about.
She muted herself.
Aubrey, can she hear me through the mic?
I think she can now. Can you hear her now? Or can you hear now?
Lisa, can you hear?
She yams.
Yeah, she said muted now, but I think she's muted. Are you muted now?
I am.
There, I'm here. Okay. All right. So on the consent agenda, are you voting in favor of that?
The minutes of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So that shows to be unanimous. All right. Okay, we'll now move on to our action items this evening. Consideration and possible action regarding the Sanders Track preliminary plat of .366 acres of land being a part of and out of Track G, out of Lot 1, Block 2, Friendswood subdivision in the Sarah McKissick League, Abstract 151, Galveston County, City of Friendswood, Texas. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
With staff comments?
With staff comments, yes. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Yes, sir. So this is a preliminary plat for 212 East Heritage. It is creating one residential lot and correcting the dedication of the right-of-way for East Heritage Drive. East Heritage Drive, back when it was built, was not built within the right-of-way that was dedicated at that time. So this property owner is assisting us with cleaning it up, and then the property owner across the street will assist when they go to plat 213 East Heritage as well. We don't anticipate any changes in the infrastructure. It's existing. We're just cleaning up how it's dedicated on the plats. This plat does have quite a few outstanding items, such as correcting the vicinity map, showing all easements within 200 feet, showing existing water and sewer lines, Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District drainage easement, and then identifying the 100-year floodplain, and then, most importantly, the lot width. They're dedicating right-of-way, and so in order to meet the lot width requirement of having 90% of their lot width at the street, we need 81 feet along that right-of-way line that they're dedicating. So those are the outstanding items. If, under the new state law requirements, if we approve with conditions, then they are going to have to bring this back to us, hopefully, at the next meeting, so they can keep moving forward with the process. There's also some description in the drainage easement. The Drainage District, in their review, told them that they needed to do a 100-foot easement. I was originally told by the Drainage District that they needed a 50-foot easement. So that's something they're going to have to work out with the Drainage District, but that wouldn't hold up our plating process at this point.
Aubrey, before we get into the discussion up here on this, what's the distinction, or is there a distinction, between denying it, under the new rules, or approving it with the conditions?
So approving with condition or denying with reasons, or it's the same process? Either way, they can bring them back, and once they bring it back, we have 15 days to get it back on an agenda.
Now, the one prior plat that had a number of open issues, I think we, our action was to approve it with the listed conditions.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we did.
Okay. So, thank you, Aubrey. Brett? Can I answer questions?
I don't have too many.
You know, I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't ask if there's, is the applicant here?
No, they are not.
Okay, sorry. Sorry for interrupting you. Thank you.
I don't have too many questions or comments, other than what Aubrey already stated. There's quite a few outstanding items. Most of them are notational on the plat itself. The big one that sticks out to me is that disagreement on the easement for Drainage District. That's pretty significant, so, but that's between them and the Drainage District, so if they satisfy all the city requirements, then I'm okay. I have nothing else.
Rich?
Yeah, I echo Brett's comments. I'm a little disappointed they're bringing it forward with so many changes. I mean, I don't understand what the purpose is, but I appreciate the staff working with them and trying to get these resolved.
Mark?
No, I don't have any comments about the technical merits of this. We're voting to approve it with conditions. Was that the motion?
That's what the motion before us is.
Okay, and it's the same result?
Yeah.
Okay. Crazy government process.
Can we go to Lisa? Lisa, did you have any comments on this one?
So I did notice a lot of red ink on it. It did not seem to me that it was ready for prime time with that much red ink, and I was trying to understand if that was common, if it was, if those were all things that were going to be fixed. I just didn't understand why it came with that many issues on it.
So, under the new state law, we did our staff review, and we gave them the comments, and they addressed some of the comments, and just not all of them. We gave them the option to withdraw the application, but they did not do that. So we had to put it on the agenda for consideration.
Any other questions, Lisa?
I can't hear what you just said.
Oh, I was asking if there were any other questions?
No.
Tom, I'll come to you.
No questions.
Okay. Yeah, Aubrey, I mean, like everybody else, there are a lot, but either way, it comes back. It looks the same result. I counted, I think, eight open issues, which seems to be a lot. The only other question I had that hasn't been asked or discussed is the drainage, the 50 versus 100. I just want to be clear, that drainage easement is from the property boundary? Is it from the center of the creek? What is that?
It should be from the center line of the creek, so they would require that same easement on both sides. So either 50 or 100, whatever it's going to be, would be from the center line on both sides of the creek.
With the way the easements are for the road and the way the small piece of property that already is, that's going to make it tough to build on, I think, if it really is 100.
Yes.
So, okay. Okay. And that's up to, it's up to the applicant to clear up that with the Drainage District?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was, that was all I had. Since it really doesn't make a difference, I'm probably inclined, at this point, just to go ahead and approve it with conditions, but I could go either way with it. I'm just following the path we took last time on this, is all I'm doing. Just sends the right message that, yeah, you've got a large number to clean up. But that's the motion before us, but I'm happy if anybody wants to do it a different way, I'm happy to, if that motion doesn't pass, we can come back and deny it as well.
If the motion fails, it's still the same result.
There you go. But I think, if it fails, is that, does that count as a denial?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Still learning this new process. Okay, so we have a motion to approve with staff conditions. Any other questions? We have a second. All those in favor of approving with staff conditions? Looks to be unanimous. Big hand. All right. Hold on one second. Okay, our next topic is discussion, is a discussion item regarding proposed amendments to Appendix C zoning ordinance, Section 7.1 Downtown District. General purpose and description: to add a reference to Section 20 Definitions, Section 7.2.3 Area and Height Exceptions, to amend the height exceptions and Section 20 Definitions' height to remove a duplicate requirement. Aubrey?
So this is just a discussion item tonight. It's a follow-up from the work session that we had with city council on July 6. The message that we got from city council was, you know, that they would like for the church, some kind of compromise to allow the church to have the taller steeple and tower combination. So we have two ways to go about this. So I'll present those two options, and we can just, you know, decide which way we're going to move forward from there. So the first option is to change the zoning ordinance to allow the exception to 90 feet for any and all structures in the downtown district, which is the path that we were on. The goal would be to write the ordinance in such a way to avoid any unintended consequences, I think, that all the Commission is concerned about, as well as city council. Restrictions could be included for the types of structures that it could exceed the building height, such as stipulating that it cannot be habitable, it can't be combustible, and clarify that it has to be decorative, and then limiting the size of that may be an option as well. Option two would be to request that the church amend their SUP and to allow the church, and to include the exception for the height in their specific SUP. The current zoning ordinance still needs to be amended to clarify our height exceptions, but this would allow the church, you know, would allow three other things, or accomplish three other things that we've talked about, which is notifying the surrounding property owners of the height exception. That wouldn't necessarily be possible if we changed the whole ordinance, because we wouldn't notify the whole downtown district that we were changing the ordinance. We would do a newspaper notice, but we wouldn't notify each individual property owner, including the church in the discussions. That would also be accomplished, because it would be their application, they could give their input as well, whereas that might not be ideal with changing the zoning ordinance, because, again, that would affect the entire downtown district. And then avoiding unintended consequences. One thing, if we do this option, we do have a draft on the building height, you know, some clarifications in our ordinance. One thing that we might consider adding is to allow the authority for the Commission to consider exceptions, if you want to cap that exception or something. But right now, the way we have the amendments written is that our hands are tied to 70 feet with no other alternatives in the downtown district. The other districts are a maximum height of 40 feet with a 10-foot exception, and then, unless otherwise approved by the Commission. So we've got some latitude in all the other districts, but we're tying our hands in the downtown.
Okay. I was just going to make a general comment first, that the workshop was a very good exchange of ideas, and we worked through a lot of different concepts, but I agree with how Aubrey summarized it. Basically, city council asked us to come back and figure out a way to make this happen for the Baptist Church without opening us up to a lot of unintended consequences, just exactly, Aubrey, what you said. But it was a really good exchange. For those that haven't seen it, it's still out there, available on YouTube to see, so I recommend that. Good exchange of ideas. So with that, I'll go ahead and just start the discussion. Lisa, I'll start with you, if she heard me.
I was able to hear all that. I think I'm kind of leaning toward the SUP for the church with the, go ahead and update the language in the ordinance, but that the exception to exceed the 70 feet, I think 70 feet is tall enough. I'm not inclined to go past that, so I think I would prefer to keep the wording in the ordinance at the 70 feet and use the SUP for the church. It's my inclination.
Great, thank you. Mark?
Just a clarification for me on option one. Aren't there exemption processes that can be applied today? I mean, I'm not talking about an overruling from council, I'm talking about a formal exemption process.
Yes, and that would be going back and amending the SUP to allow the height with that.
Okay. Let me ask it a different way. If we carried through our recommendation to council, and council agreed with planning and zoning and said, "Sorry, we're not going to do 90 feet," isn't the church afforded an exemption process through that? Isn't there another path that they can take? There is no exemption process whatsoever.
No. Are you talking about under the current ordinances or under the proposed?
Under the current ordinances and processes.
So their path would be the SUP.
Okay. So you're telling me it ends at council? There's no other recourse for?
ZBOA.
Yeah, why not that?
That would be a hard sell, but yes.
Well, and hopefully, this doesn't muddy the waters, but the only reason why it's going back to council is because the use requires a specific use permit, and that's their method for site plan approval.
Right.
If this was a permitted use that was just going through site plan approval, it would end with the Commission.
Okay.
But since the site plan process is attached to the SUP, it has to go through that.
Okay, so then I've not been exposed, since I've been sitting in this seat, to a situation where ZBOA would get involved. So what circumstances would allow for that exemption process to materialize?
There would have to be a hardship on the property as to why they couldn't meet the requirement to go for a variance.
Okay. And then that bypasses all of this process, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
So today, we're talking about which option we want to take. Are we going to have more discussion? I might have questions later as we dig into this.
I think what Aubrey is looking for, staff is looking for, is a kind of an indication, a straw vote of which path, so that they know which one to focus on. I think they're looking for that from us tonight.
Yeah, then I support, I support number two. I think that gets the most amount of people to the table, including any public who might have missed this from the get-go, and I think there's a collaboration need here, and that's, seems to me, the easiest way to get there.
Okay. Thank you. Rich?
So just to summarize, I think the general consensus on planning and zoning is that 70 feet is high enough, but the general consensus on the city council was that this particular applicant should be given a special exemption to have 90 feet or 88 feet taller and be the tallest church or decorative structure in downtown. And so with that as a rule, that we're going to do what the city council asks us to do, then we have the two choices, like you said. I haven't seen a good way of writing Category 1 without having unintended consequences. I mean, I got some pretty smart people looking at different ways of doing it, and I haven't heard one that actually works, that would prevent Tanos from putting a big T on the top of his structure, or McDonald's from putting a big M on the top of their structure. And so we're trying very hard to avoid unintended consequences, or have the city look like something we don't want it to look like, and yet fulfill city council's request to give this particular applicant a special exemption over all others. So with that, I think number two is the right way to go, the SUP, and it would be not only the SUP, but also, as you said, Aubrey, an amendment to the ordinance to allow us the right, we as planning and zoning, the right to allow something to exceed 70 feet. Right now, it is, doesn't even give us that right. And so we'd have to both have the right to do that and the willingness to write the SUP, and I think the SUP is the right function for doing a special exemption for a particular client, like we're planning here.
Brett?
I'm going to agree with everyone. I think option two is definitely the best way to go. That's why we had the SUP process in the city's toolbox for this exact situation we're in now. Anytime you develop anything, no matter what it is or what city and how intense it is, you're going to bump up against an ordinance you just flatly don't like, or it's constrained in some way. You work away, you work around that. If it's a good one, is to go through the SUP process. I'm fully in favor of keeping the height at 70 feet. That was a hard-fought height limit back in 2007, 2008, and so I think we need to stick with that. But there are special circumstances that come up that maybe we could allow to go over that, and I think that should be a council decision, have your elected officials make that call. And so I'm in favor of doing that, and I was so pleased to hear that the church redesigned a little bit and brought it below 90 feet. That's shown a little bit of compromise, so kudos to you all for doing that. So I'm definitely in favor of option two.
Tom?
I agree with option two also. My opinion on it is 70 foot is more, is allowing more than any of the neighboring communities, so I don't see a reason to adjust that and therefore go with option two.
Great, thank you. You know, it's pretty well been said here, kind of, the only thing I'd add to that is just, I'll echo the one thought that, on its own, planning and zoning from a purely technical matter really felt, unanimously felt that 70 feet was high enough to meet the intent of that property and that structure. However, after workshopping with council and their request to look at this again, I'm in full support of the option two, although going in, I absolutely was, let's change the ordinance. Let's not make exceptions, let's just change the rule. That's how I tend to normally do things, but in this particular case, there were so many overwhelming reasons, like being able to notify the neighbors to make sure they were involved, being able to continue working with the church and make sure they're involved in this. So with those added benefits, option two with the SUP seems the way to go as well. So I think you're getting kind of a unanimous decision on that.
Yes, sir, and we will work with the church. The next submittal date for that SUP would be August 10, I believe, and so we could get that back on for a public hearing coming up in September and have it done by November, so. I don't think that'll hold them up in any of their processes, and we'll work with them as much as possible.
Okay. Any other discussion on that before we move on to the next item? Okay. Okay, next is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning Commission meeting dates. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. Our two meetings in August are Thursday, August 13, and Thursday, August 27.
Communications are next, starting with Commissioner updates. Do any Commissioners have anything that they wish to communicate, suggestions for future agenda items, subcommittee updates, general comments, or any updates from liaison assignments? I will state, since I asked about liaison assignments, I'll kind of go out of order on this one, and just say that, just heads up, that we are, it's time to take a look at our liaison assignments, with Tom coming on board, and it's been a while since we've looked at them. So I'll be reaching out, or Aubrey and I will be reaching out, kind of polling, getting everybody's thoughts on what different committees, what different liaison assignments they have, and seeing if we want to make any changes to those at this time. So, and Tom, we'll get you up to speed on what all those different liaison assignments look like. But just know that that's that that's coming, and we'll be working on that. Also coming up, I know time flies, but the chair and vice chair positions are also up. So that'll be something else that'll be coming up in, probably the next meeting, I assume. So if anybody would like to be chair or vice chair, please let Aubrey know. Looking for anybody that's interested. So with that, I will then turn it over to going, I'll start, Lisa, starting with you.
So my liaison assignment is to keep Friendswood beautiful, that, that group. I absolutely adore that assignment, so I'd like to keep it if possible. And the latest thing that they had going on, of course, a lot of their activities are outreach and summer activities with the kids. And the one thing that did get able to be completed in the age of COVID was the ferry trail. And I think I mentioned that that got like CNN national coverage. So I thought that was pretty neat. And I have not walked the ferry trail, but if anybody has, be sure and speak up and say how awesome it is. So it's the only thing that I know of going on. Most things have canceled, just like the rest of the world.
Mark?
Yeah, so in, in hearing the oath tonight, it kind of reminded me of the oath that I took back in 18. So I feel obligated to bring up that I'm a bit confused on, how to say it, what integrity we should maintain of the products that we produce from the Planning and Zoning Commission, right? So when it leaves here and goes to council, I want to make sure that the integrity of those products are maintained. I know I'm not sure if we have enough rigor in the process, or I'm ignorant to it, but I'd like to take some swift action on there. I see us as a commission, that we're volunteers and we're to be objective and, and look at the community as a whole. I think that's a fundamental tenet of what we're here to do. And council or city staff might not agree with what we put out as a product, but I think it should be addressed with us. So any modification of those products that happen after it leaves our desk here, I think should be done in collaboration with us, not as a reaction. So I take that seriously, and I feel like we should address it via process or otherwise. So I wanted to get that out there and see if there's action we can take.
Yeah, I think there's, that's been a topic of conversation, to my understanding, and I think that's, that's been addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Rich?
I have nothing.
Brett?
Nothing for me.
Tom?
Nothing, it's Tom.
Okay, well, again, Tom, welcome aboard. Before moving on to council liaison updates, I see that we have both council liaisons, our former liaison, Trish Hanks. Trish, thank you so much for all your help. I'm glad you came here tonight, one more time. So thank you so much for all your support that you provided us. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Aubrey. When I'm in backup, you'll still be there.
Oh, I didn't know that. And Mr. Garfunkel, welcome aboard.
Well, thank you. I really am.
Well, actually, we're going to move right, come on, come on. It's your time. So we're going to move right into council liaison update. Anything to pass along?
Well, thank you, commissioners. I really am looking forward to being the City Council liaison to P and Z, and I'm really looking forward to working with y'all. And if y'all need anything from council, or if I can help in any way, just know that I'm here and ready to do that. And I also want to say that I think everybody's in agreement, but Trish will be a great mayor pro tem.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you very much. Next, our staff updates. Aubrey?
The June DRC report was in your backup material. I think we only had one item on there. We are doing virtual DRC meetings again, just through email. So we've actually had, I think, two or three this month already. So we are busy as usual. Actually, for the month of June, we issued 27 new single-family home permits, which 13 in January was our second biggest number. It's in probably two or three years. So the permits department is busy.
Good, good. Becky?
No, sir.
Mary Kay, anything this evening? Okay. Thanks, everybody. The July 23, 2020 Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for coming.